I'd like to call a meeting order for October 8th, 2019. Invocation by Mr. Walter Cruzel. Which I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was me. So we're gonna make it simple. A moment of silence for the families that the tragedy over at Bradley Airport last week Amen. Thank you. Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it's fans. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. Thank you. Fire evacuation, there's two exits, rear of the chamber, out to the parking lot, or to my left, your right, left down the stairs into the rear parking lot. Roll call, please.
Mr. Renier?
Here.
Mr. Rutledge? Mrs. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Hernandez? Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairman Cruzel?
Here. Mr. Rutledge had a previous engagement, he couldn't make it tonight. Board guests, we're gonna start with Ms. Lori Gates. Who I know has good news, so I'll leave it at that.
Well, bad news.
And hopefully has a voice today.
I say, I got my voice back, 'cause that might be bad news.
Pull that microphone up and scream as loud as you can.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
So Pam Townsend couldn't be here tonight for wreaths, so I get to play the role. I'm not gonna switch seats, but she was there last night. And if anybody's watching from home, it's the same speech, "Go get a snack." So, so.
Okay, I'll be right back.
We wanted to talk about Wreaths Across America, and there's three portions to the program. So when Pam opened up last evening, she was explaining how the mission of Wreaths Across America is to remember our fallen, honor those who serve, and teach the value of freedom. The theme this year, set by the company in Maine, is, quote, "Everyone plays a part." But how does Enfield support the mission? When we have the cemetery ceremony here every year, it's our 11th year this year, and as long as we have people to run the cemetery ceremony, we're good. But those wreaths that get delivered here are sponsored by individuals, and that's where we appeal to the public for some help. I'll get into that in a little bit. The ceremony isn't just here, and it's not just in Connecticut, it's global. There's over 1,600 ceremonies that take place at the same time at memorial sites all over America, at sea and abroad. We have ceremonies honoring veterans of our nation's allies, and ceremonies on international border-crossing bridges between the U.S. and Canada. And last year, there were nearly 1.8 million veterans wreathed placed across the country. So we were representing that number, but we rely on, again, the public. There is about 1,500 veterans that are buried at St. Patrick Cemetery here in Enfield alone, one cemetery out of several. It's our goal to remember and honor every veteran laid to rest there, and we can do that with help. This year's ceremony is on December 14th, Saturday, and you can access forms online at the wreathsacrossamerica.org site, or contacting Pam or myself. My part last night, provided my voice stays, is the three integral parts of Wreaths Across America. And I say three, but typically you only get two. The first part is, it's on a wreath ceremony done on a congressionally-designated date. The laying of the wreaths is the second part that follows that ceremony. As Pam's part had said, we have those two parts every year. We sit here today in chambers where elected officials and specifically chosen employees and leaders decide policies on the daily, and it's pretty easy to point out to everyone that decisions are made after much thought, discussion, sometimes arguments, passionate yeses and noes, and ultimately by compromise. That's for our town and our school system. Imagine the U.S. Congress coming together, designate one day, one hour for Wreaths Across America, and have everybody listen. It happens wherever, across the globe, at noon Eastern Standard Time on that date. It's not an easy feat to have things happen that way. So it impacts that one decision, giving the date and time, impacts every single person involved in that process, from the balsam tree trimmers to the truckers, the U.S. Postal Service, all the way down to the first person that steps up to that mic on that Saturday. What might seem to be a simple decision affects thousands of lives behind the scenes, so that these ceremonies that we attend and take part in on that designated day are meaningful, welcoming to all, and unifying in communities. They're heartfelt, honorable, and we hope reverent. It's not an easy task, but it shouldn't be easy, because the people that we're honoring didn't have an easy task. They're worthy of so much more than that one hour, but if we can come together for that one hour, we're doing something for them. The second part is the wreath laying at the end of that cemetery ceremony. We encourage people, when they come to a grave, to say the name of the person that they're laying that wreath for. It makes an emotional connection between the individual and that person that's laid to rest there. Wreaths are sponsored year-round. On the website, it's a $15 tax-deductible donation to wreaths. They're accumulated, they're delivered all at the same time, usually the day before the ceremony. So if you wanna spend $15 on February 4th and you designate Enfield, it's not gonna be delivered until the day before the December ceremony, but you can do it at any time. And $15 is for one wreath. There's a code for St. Patrick Cemetery, all this is on the website that we can find. So those two parts are a given. As long as we have location leaders to run the ceremony and participation from the community with wreath donations, we're good for those two. The third part is, we're just geographically lucky in many ways. These come out of Worcester, Maine, Worcester family out of Maine. If we lived in Texas, we're not exactly on their delivery route as they're headed to Arlington, but we are. The convoy's a pretty special thing. I mean, they're filled with wreaths that are separated by segment, of the cemetery at Arlington. They make stops along their way, when possible, to schools, VA hospitals, military installations, whatnot, to honor those lost and afford us that last opportunity of teach the third tenant of their program. By a stroke of sheer luck, and trust me, it was sheer luck, in 2011, they stopped in Enfield. Because of the enthusiastic patriotism of our town and the creative expertise of our public school teachers and staff, we've made an impression on Maine. They have been here five times since 2011. So I'm here tonight to say, we get 'em back for a sixth time this year. Huge thank you to everybody that's involved, because this is the teachers, the students, the first responders, the general public. There's a reason that they keep coming back to Enfield, and the reason is everybody that supports this program. It's heartwarming for me, at the end of the day, that I hear them, they're at their dinner where they stop at for the next stop, or that they hit Arlington, and they're talking about, "You won't believe what we saw in Enfield." And that's pretty impressive, we're one little tiny town on that route to make that kind of impression. So all three of these things need each other to be successful. If we don't teach what the wreaths are for and where they're going, people don't understand how to do it, there won't be more wreaths on the truck for Arlington, they won't be coming here. But this highlights how Enfield comes together when it counts, how good we can do things together. So we'll update you on the route, we don't have it yet, and the program, but they are gonna return to Parkman Elementary on Wednesday, December 11th this year. So we'll be updating you on information, and I just wanna say, I'm really proud to be part of this town and to see it all come together. I'm at the school, so I see that end of it, but then when I see pictures and hear stories about masses of people going out roadside, and to hear the drivers emotionally saying how wonderful Enfield is, it just, it makes me so proud of everybody. So thank you to everybody that's supported the program, supported us by sponsoring wreaths for veterans' graves, and I can't wait to see what 2019 brings, because every year we seem to top the year before. So, thank you. That's it for me.
Any questions for Ms. Gates?
Just thank you. I mean, I know the work you do, we all do, and we see it every year, and it's, this town oozes patriotism, but thanks to people like you who bring us all together for this.
It's really a great opportunity. I mean, it's just, I'm so honored that they contacted, you know, I got a text last week that said, "How are you?" And I'm like, "Okay, how are you?" He's like, "Well, do you want us back?" Absolutely, figure it out later. So I guess first and figure out the details, but.
Thank you, on behalf of everybody.
Thank you, everybody, for all the support.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you for doing this as well. Will the path, the route, be similar to the recent years? Will they'll end up at Parkman, but they'll still go by JFK and Hazardville?
They're gonna end at Parkman, I just don't know, I have to meet with EPD to find out what resources they can commit to it, because going by every school last year was rough for them to cover all those intersections, but I figure I can always ask.
I just wanted to say that, because I know last year, for the first time, you went past, like, Hazard Memorial School.
Yes.
And, like, those kids hadn't experienced it yet, just 'cause they're a little bit off the beaten path of the main roads of Raffia and everything else. So if they can do that, that would be amazing, because the kids had an amazing time.
Hopefully, they're listening.
So, and thank you.
Also, not to interrupt and toss back, but with PTO end of things, just as an idea, Liz asked us last night. There's a fundraising portion that can be done through Wreaths Across America, and PTOs are kind of a perfect way to do it. You do not have to be a 501(c)(3), if you're a community group, but you register, and they give you a code. So let's say Hazardville, since you brought up Hazardville. They register their PTO, and they get a code. When they fill, if they send blank wreath order for it, home in everybody's backpack, and they'll have, put Enfield's code on it, and they put their code, every time somebody buys a $15 wreath, they send $5 back to that registered fundraising group. So, and it doesn't change the purchase price. So you're doing your same $15 tax-deductible donation, a veteran's receiving a wreath, you don't have to handle anything, 'cause it comes in December, and you automatically, monthly, I think it is, if they cut the checks, you get $5 for everyone, just for writing that code on there. So it's win-win, because everybody can push for wreath donations, but they also get money back for doing that.
So we can chat about that offline, 'cause we have the best PTOs in the country.
I agree.
And we can promote it through enfieldpto.com, and each of the individual PTO websites, et cetera, and their Facebook pages. So yeah, I'll talk to you about that, and then we'll get that all set up.
Sounds good.
We can have that up and running in the next week or two.
Sounds great.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Ms. Ryder?
Well, obviously, I'm just gonna say thank you, like everybody else does, 'cause you do a phenomenal job with anything regarding veterans in our town.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to urge people out in TV land, if you can, when we find out the route, if you can't make it to Parkman, go and stand on the route and wave to them, 'cause I did that last year, it was awesome. They beep and they honk, it's awesome. And yeah, definitely do the PTO thing, 'cause we do it for first readers, we're sign up and ready to go, so it's a good thing.
And wreath sponsorship deadlines is Thanksgiving this year.
Right.
So it just has to be done before then.
Yes. So thank you, Lori, awesome job.
Thank you.
Again.
Well, I've always said Enfield is the promised land, the center of the universe, so it all fits today, so thank you. I think we should give her a round of applause for her hard work.
None of that happens, it's just the community. I mean, I can organize something, but unless you get community response, teacher response, student response.
If you get more details, pass them through to Superintendent, we'll put 'em on TV, we'll advertise as much as possible, the more people we can get out and wave, like you said, is...
Right.
These people, you know, these drivers deserve it, and all this, all the work they do, just, if somebody could just stand out for five minutes and give them...
Oh, yeah.
They would, they would, they love it.
And by the time they get to Parkman, they're usually in tears.
Yes.
Mr. Dreszek was there last year, witnessing at first hand, so.
Yes, they are. And they love, they loved, they loved the Assembly of Parkman, too, so.
Oh, yeah. I mean, but, you know, kudos to everybody who gets out there, or who tells somebody else so they can, if they can't, because that's what makes it happen. I can organize whatever, but if nobody goes. It's wreathsacrossamerica.org.
Wreathsacrossamerica.org.
All one word. And, or they can contact me.
If you're able to put that up, that would be nice.
Or they can contact me, or Pam Townsend, we're both on Facebook, and we'll help you with whatever you need to get done, and if we can't answer it, we know somebody who can.
No, not that one.
They put up enfieldpto.com.
That's it, that's why. They're looking for their order.
It'll be, it'll be up there shortly.
You'll have it up, and I'll mention it again during my comments, so thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You wanna ride again this year?
Yeah.
We can put 'em in the back of the truck this time, how's that?
There you go. Wreathsacrossamerica.org.
Perfect, thank you. Chairman prerogative, we're gonna take letter C before B, 'cause that's my alphabet, A-C-B. So letter C is Teacher Evaluation Presentation. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Haran, I'm one of the Assistant Principals at JFK, and I'm the administrator that's for the co-chair position on the committee. And this is Gray Wonsor, who's also a co-chair, representing the teachers on the TVAL Committee, Socialities Teacher at Enfield High. We have had the opportunity that Central Office has let us meet as a committee every year a few times, so we can really take our document and have it be a working draft, so that we can consistently be able to meet the needs of our students by making sure we have best practices for our educators. And one focus that we had this past year was to look at our rubrics for our specialists, for social workers, speech-language pathologists, and our school psychologists. And what we found as a committee that would be the most important, basically, way that we could deliver the best rubric for them, was to actually consult with those professionals. So they spent quite a long time going through, making sure that what they had for indicators aligned with the different associations that they belong to, and that the national standards were embedded within their rubric. And, you know, it was a larger task than we thought of them helping us out, and they really came back to the committee with a comprehensive rubric for each of the specialists that were presenting to you. So we are really grateful to all of them for all of their hard work, because they are the experts, and the fact that they put so much work into this, it was a lot easier for us as a committee to kind of get together and go through and just make sure it aligned with the educators' rubric. And this was, I think, the first time that when we met with the state and went over all the changes, they didn't have one question for us. They thought that it was a very solid rubric for each of those specialists. So I'm gonna hand it over to Gray, he'll go into a little bit more detail.
Sure. Sorry. Yeah, so you can see, it's a pretty extensive packet there, the rubrics are about five, six pages each, so just to condense it down into paragraph form, it's, you have the first document there. Like Sarah said, the rubric that is used for a classroom teacher and the criteria in there, it's not exactly appropriate for these specialty positions, because you're talking about a class of 20, 25, in case of a band, 100, 125 students. These people are working in more individualized or small-group settings, so that's kind of the major theme that you'll see here. With social workers, there's the National Association of Social Workers guidelines, so we aligned a lot of this language along with that, which is a recommendation that came from the social workers. Just some highlights, the support environment and planning and preparation, all that stuff, it really focuses on the one-on-one or small-group setting of kids that have, you know, a pretty, you know, a pretty big need there. So we reflected that, and because social workers deal with everything that is going on outside of school with the kids, you know, we reflected that as well, dealing with difficult personal issues and trying to overcome those. So you'll see that, that's, those sort of ideas reflected in that set of rubrics there. With the psychologists, they do a lot of testing to determine if a child is eligible for services, so we focused a lot on the specialized interaction and communication to the rest of the staff about appropriate interventions and addressing their individualized needs. And then with the speech-language pathologists, you'll see a large focus, because they're kind of the go-between, between the school staff, the parents, outside consultants and specialists, so the language that you'll see in those, in that document, it kind of reflects those themes as well. So as Sarah mentioned before, these were things that we did put forward to the state, they had no questions, they had no addendums, they willfully accepted them. So the purpose of us being here tonight is to ask you for approval. Teachers are meeting with their evaluators very soon to determine their goals, so we'd like to possibly get this in place, if so willing, so.
I don't know if anyone has any other questions for us?
Any questions? Ms. LeBlanc?
I'll just make a comment that I think this is great, that it's evolving, and you're trying to be all-inclusive, so you're not trying to fit, you know, a square peg in a round hole. Like, you're definitely identifying that teachers have all these different roles, and obviously, the evaluation is to get the best out of everybody, so that they can be successful and feel successful and valued as well. So by doing this, and getting more specific and granular, and actually working with them to come up with a fair rubric, I think is a wonderful thing. And I appreciate all your work on top of, you know, being an administrator and being a teacher, because I'm sure that's busy enough, and then you add on this. So I appreciate any extra work that you guys do, and I really think this was a nice job, so thank you.
Mr. Neville?
Congratulations. I know what a hard job this is. For all the decades that I was in your positions, this was always a huge need, and it never fully got satisfied. It was just, you always knew it wasn't right. Looks like this is right. And so I applaud your efforts, I applaud you getting everybody else involved in it, so, 'cause it, you know, you get an authentic document, so keep up the good work, and thank you.
Ms. Ryder?
Yeah. I just really like how it incorporates the family into it, too, and how they interact with the family and the community also, not just that one student. That, I think that's a great thing, especially on a small scale like that, because that will impact the child the most. I think you guys did an awesome job. Thank you very much.
They play tennis at these... Great job. I think consensus is that we will approve this for you, so you don't need to wait around and wait for us to officially vote, but.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Any other questions, Mr. Dreszek? Do they think they covered it all?
Could we just get the same document electronically?
Oh, definitely, yes.
That's all, thank you.
That would be great, thank you.
Take care of that for you.
I just have one question.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's, no, no, it's, I'm sorry, it's nothing big.
I thought I'd get you out of here.
For a social worker, domain one, indicator C, for performance levels two and one, it just, the word "school" is left off as "social worker." I don't know if that was intentional, or that was just a misprint.
Thank you for catching that.
'Cause that is in all the other domains, so I just wanted to just, uh, put that out there.
We can make that change. Thank you for catching that.
You're welcome. That was it. Sorry.
He's our policy expert. He reads these things from top to bottom, so.
All right.
All right, and last chance, any other questions? They've already gone up and down four times over there, so.
Just thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
So let's back up to letter B, and get the JFK Building Committee up here, Mr. Chairman and his team. Yeah, we need this, I think we need the screen there.
Yes, please, thank you.
And I will switch this to the... Oh, that's not the button, that's the button. Oh, he taught me last meeting, so.
The camera last week, not Bruce, yesterday.
Boof.
It's still on.
And it's clearer, it went this way. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Hello there. I didn't think I'd be back here again, but...
When there's a building to be done, you will be sitting there.
Thank you for me, I am, so. I'm gonna introduce myself and talk a little bit, and then I'm gonna have the rest of the team introduce themselves. My name's Randy Dagel. Once again, I'm fortunate enough to be chairman of the Building Committee. This is for the JFK renovations. I'd like to just initially start off by emphasizing, we would not be here tonight if it wasn't for the pre-ref committee and everybody that did everything to get it passed. We have people that were on there, we have PTO people in the back that were on it. If it wasn't for the pre-ref, the effort that they did, we wouldn't be here today, and it would be a shame for the town, so I just wanna at least honor the pre-ref people and all the things that they did to get us here. As you know, in November, we passed a referendum. We literally, the day after, we had boots on ground. We literally started that following day. We solicited invitations for applications to the public. We had a tremendous output of applications. One of the things that I've been fortunate enough to do, I've been fortunate enough to chair every school construction in this town, and I've been fortunate enough to surround myself with a great committee, and that's exactly what I've been lucky enough to do again. We have teachers, we have counselors, we have board members, we have parents, we have engineers, we have people that are in the trade. So we get a lot of input, quality input from every individual. Everybody's there for a specific reason, and everybody takes it serious. So once again, I'm surrounding myself with a tremendous amount of people. The first thing we did, once we had a committee, is we had to hire an architect. That went very well. We were fortunate enough to get J.C.J., and I'll have them introduce themselves in a minute. And then we went and hired an owner's rep. Owner's rep is a little different than what we've done in the past. We've always had the luxury of having Dr. Art Pongrass on our team, representing the town. We no longer have that luxury, so we had to have somebody that represented us, the town. I volunteer, everybody on every committee, such as yourselves, volunteer, and it's funny, 'cause a lot of people don't realize that. This is 100% volunteer. So I can't represent the town at state level. So we have to get an owner's rep. They not only do the CA, Construction Administration, but they also take the role as representing the town. Once we hired CSG, and Chris will introduce himself shortly, we put out invitations, once the architects started going through the design, we put out invitations to hire a construction manager at risk. That is a different term that the towns used to, but we did do that for the high school. Typically, you would hire a contractor, do what's called "design bid build." You would have the architect design a building, you put it out to bid, you cross your fingers and hope it comes in under budget. Well, by doing what's called "construction manager at risk," you're hiring the construction manager as the architect's designing it. So throughout the project, everything they put on paper, the construction manager and the owner's rep, and the three of them together, review costs, so there's no override of the design. We know where it's gonna come in throughout the entire project. Once again, we were fortunate enough at the high school to come in under budget, and as of right now, we had a reconcile meeting several weeks ago, it was about seven, eight hours long, and I'll have the architect explain that process, and we're within budget. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, and, but we're with, we're in budget as of right One of the things I just want to touch upon, and again, the architect will really get involved in explaining the procedures of how we got to where we are right now, is we did this at the high school, but we did it so much more in-depth this time, is we talked to every end-user. As architects, it's easy to draw a pretty picture, but if it can't, it doesn't work properly at the end, we failed. So the architects, the owners, we've all talked to department heads, we've talked to counselors, we've talked to custodians, we've talked to the nurses, we've talked to cafeteria staff. Everybody has input on this building. This is, this is the town's house. When we're all done, we walk away, but people are stuck with this. So we wanna make sure, we got one shot to do it, and we're gonna do it right. So by doing our due diligence this early on, it pays the benefit of having it done correctly and done once. So at that point, let me just pass the mic over to Jim and Bruce, and then they can explain what the architect and the process is.
Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, all right, thank you. Well, when we were introduced to the project after the referendum, we actually got started in earnest, May and June, and as Randy indicated, one of our first steps was to sit and talk to all the end-users. We spent, I think, two and a half days in the school, and people just shuffled in and out of the conference room. We talked to music teachers, we talked to gym teachers, we talked to administrators, we talked to food service staff, we talked to custodial staff. We wanted to hear from everybody, because we were somewhat familiar with the building, because we were involved in the pre-ref effort, but we weren't as intimately aware of what was working in the building really well and what wasn't working. So we wanted to hear that, and a lot of what we thought we knew was reinforced in those conversations, but we also learned a lot about some things that could be improved. And that was really our stepping-off point. So we got started in earnest and schematic design, we reworked some of the plans, and went back and got feedback after those initial programming conversations. We also included our consultants in those conversations, so we have a food service consultant that was involved in that conversation. We have mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, site engineers, and they were all involved right from the beginning. site engineers, and they were all involved right from the beginning. We got to a point, kind of at the end of the school year, the students went off to enjoy their summer, and we actually spent a lot of time in the building itself. Our team was in there numerous days, confirming existing conditions, looking at walls that we thought were going to come down, and seeing if they could easily come down, always with cost in mind. We were always trying to make some smart decisions. We didn't want to do anything rash that, that would exceed the intended budget from, from the referendum number. So, through the summer, we actually had a company come in and do a 3D scan of the building, and that gave us a 3D model to start from. So, you know, at one point, we're working off two-dimensional plans, thinking that we could reorganize the building and shuffle some program spaces around. But, once we got that laser-scanned 3D model, then we could really start coordinating mechanical systems in there. And when the students and administrators came back in September, we've had a little over a month now, and we, we were able to confirm the schematic design budget, that we are on budget. I'm going to have Bruce talk about that a little bit later. But, more importantly, we had the, the framework of a plan that we thought worked really, really well, concluded schematic design, and we're now in design development, and we were spending a lot of time with the team in weekly meetings, talking about the details. We're talking about how windows fit, what doors are coming out, what they're going to look like. And the great thing about the, the interaction with the staff is, you know, we're, we're sending regular emails, we're having meetings, and whenever we have a question, the staff has been super, super supportive and responsive. Whenever we send something to the superintendent's office, or the principal, or assistant principal at the school, they, they've been really, really good about passing that question along, getting an answer, and getting it back to us, to, to keep us moving along, because the schedule is absolutely critical. So, there's a kudos to all the team, not only on the owner's side, but the consultants and, and everybody that's involved. It's, it's a big team, team effort, and it's been working really well lately. So, I think the, I think we'll probably try to get through some, some fun design stuff now, kind of the best part of the project. So, you can see on the screen, the project understanding, this is really our starting point. The renovated school is going to be a little over 190,000 square feet. The existing building is a little shy of 180,000 square feet. So, we're taking down a small portion, and we're adding about 18,000 square feet of, of new building. One of the key things is the site. We, we do have a number budgeted for that, and in the pre-ref, we talked about reorienting fields and some, some general planning, big, big moves that we're making. As, as we were in the school, we began to observe buses coming in in the morning, how the students move from the buses into the school, pick up in the afternoon, and we were made aware, not only by the administrators, but teachers, of some safety concerns, areas where students were crossing roads, bus loops, where, you know, the, the safety was called into question. So, we were onsite, observed all that. So, you can see the, the existing floor plan there, or the existing site plan, just kind of documents what's there. But, based on the conversations, we identified a couple of things that we thought we could correct fairly easily and inexpensively. One of the desires was to add a, add a little bit of parking in the right spot on the site by, by putting the new addition. The new addition is, is essentially the auditorium and a public lobby, and it's on the north side of the building, so the top part of this drawing. There was a desire to add some parking spaces, so it would be close to the, that public entry. So, you can see the, the reworking of that parking lot up there, but that also facilitated a, a conversation as to how the buses, would they continue coming in the same exact point that they're coming in now, and loop all the way around the building in a clockwise manner? And we, we thought that that worked pretty well. The only issue was the crossing of the parents that were dropping in the south lot. So, what we proposed was extending the bus loop, once it got passed where the existing cafeteria is, we would just extend it straight out towards where the tennis courts are, and then exit the southernmost part of the site, which allowed the southern lot to become a one-way loop exclusively for parent drop-off. So, we'll have some visitor spaces. There will probably be some faculty and staff that'll park in that lot, but in the morning, it'll be parents looping in, and we've tried to extend that as far as we can, so we can maximize the number of cars that are stacked, dropping. It'll probably be more of an issue in the afternoon. You've got a lot of parents coming, sitting and waiting 15, 20 minutes before the students come out. But, we, we think from a safety standpoint, the site is, is going to work a lot better and a lot safer, something that we heard was very, very important. Another thing that we've moved on the site is some of the van drop-off. We have a couple of self-contained special ed rooms that have been relocated within the footprint of the building. You can see on the southern end of the building, the bottom part of that drawing, there's a little loop, a little circle, right next to the building. So, that's a spur that comes right off the parent loop, and the special ed vans and small buses will be able to pull right into that space and have a dedicated drop-off directly into the self-contained rooms that, that are right in that part of the building. I have some enlarged plans that I can talk a little bit about. The new, new nurse's office is in that location as well, so any kind of vehicle that needs to get in and out of there, that, that seems like a really, really good place to be able to do that. The other big thing that we're proposing is a reorientation of all the playfields on the eastern side. We'll, we'll be doing some minor regrading, trying to get some, some drainage working a little better out there. It'll be all-new grass, and the fields will now be lined and oriented correctly. Most of the fields are oriented east-west, so the players are always looking into the sun one way or the other. Optimally, you want them oriented north-south, so we've, we've achieved that. We haven't added any acreage or square footage to it, but it was really just a reorienting of those fields. The other big thing that we, we are proposing is where we put the 50 spaces at the north side by the new public entry, we displaced a couple of basketball courts that get regular, regular use up there. So, we're now proposing to build those down close to the athletic fields, so it kind of zones out all of the athletic functions into the eastern part of the site, outboard of that bus loop. We think it cleans it up a little bit. We're going to be doing some regrading. I think some previous proposals had some significant retaining walls to achieve some of those playfields. We've been able to grade out all of the, the athletic fields, and we're not proposing any retaining walls. I think that was one of the big cost savers that, that we ended up coming out of the pre-ref effort with, and we've been able to facilitate that all the way through schematic design. It seems to be working really well. Just to orient everybody with the overall existing floor plans, you have the three two-story classroom wings, the red, white, and blue wings. You have the existing gymnasium next to the pool, and some locker rooms flanking either side of the pool. You have a, a wing with exclusively the tech ed spaces, that red wing that you see on the, on the upper part of the drawing, as well as the media center, which is the new addition in 2000, 2001, and then the cafeteria and cafe, cafeteria and kitchen. So, just keeping all of that in mind, part of the exercises, as we went through the pre-ref and the programming exercise, we were trying to maximize what worked really well in the building and what obviously needed to be corrected. So, we, we started moving some big program pieces around within the building. So, the big moves here really are moving the main office into where the ca, existing cafeteria is. We're building a brand-new auditorium, which then frees up that center hub where the auditorium is, and creating a, a five new tech ed spaces, a little bit more technology-driven as opposed to shop-driven. We left the gymnasium right where it is, but we proposed moving the cafeteria up where the existing pool is, because the pool is coming offline, reworked all of the locker rooms so that they became a lot more efficient. They take up a tremendous amount of space, and that space is, is wasted at this point. And then we would renovate each and every one of the two-story classroom wings, the red, white, and blue wings, get completely gutted one at a time. Bruce is going to talk a little bit about the phasing of that and how it would work from a construction standpoint. And then the last move overall would be taking all the admin offices, the nurse, the, the principal's office, that are somewhat spread out throughout the building a little bit, and consolidating them in one location. So, you truly have a main office and a front door that visitors can come in, easily identified. It would be very clear to a visitor where they need to go in. So, once you move those program spaces out, it freed up almost that whole wing, and we're able to group all of the world language classrooms together, and it becomes more of a departmentalized structure. We can get six or seven world language classrooms in that wing dedicated to it. So, just big picture, I have a few enlarged plans that we can run through. That's just the second floor with, with the three classroom wings. So, the typical classroom wing, you can see how we reorganized. We needed to find some extra space to make the middle school teams work. You basically have four classrooms in each team, and we were trying to get two teams per floor, per wing. So, you end up with four teams for each grade. So, what you see here would be three traditional classrooms and then a science classroom. So, we're able to achieve two of those plus a, a special ed room, so you've got some support spaces that are dedicated to that grade within, within the classroom wing itself. And the other big move that we made was we tried to pull all of the assistant principals that were dedicated to the grade out closer to the hub, to the center of the, of the school, as opposed to within the wing. And what, I, I have some 3D images that I'll show you that I think will help you understand how the assistant principal and the teacher work room, by pulling them more into the hub, really becomes a gateway, and the students have to pass in and out past those offices to get into their wing. We, we think it increases just the awareness of students knowing that adults are right there watching them, and we think it's going to make, it's going to improve some of the behavioral issues that, that currently exist in that center hub. So, a couple, a couple of the other enlarged floor plans that we're looking at, this is actually the existing cafeteria and kitchen area that would be ultimately converted to the admin offices. And one of the nice things that this does is it now brings together the principal, the main office, the receptionist, security, as well as all of the guidance counselors, the nurse, and many other support spaces. So, you can see all the purple spaces. There, there's a number of very small offices, but that, that includes the social worker, the guidance offices, as well as all the workrooms and mailrooms for, for staff. So, this really becomes the new front door to the school. So, any visitor or parent that is bringing a lunch that a student forgot is going to come into this main entry, check in through security, be allowed into the main office, scanned, cleared, and then if they need to enter the building, this would be the point they, they would do it, or they turn around and go right back out to the visitor's spot and, and head off on their way. The two pink spaces that you see are actually the special, the self-contained special ed programs that, that I mentioned earlier. And one of the conversations we had with the nurse was, she actually spends a lot of time back and forth between those special, self-contained special ed rooms. There, there's a need for her to be there frequently, and she really had a, a strong desire to have an adjacency. She wanted to be close to both of those spaces, and we're able to accomplish this in, in the plan. And you can also see there's, there's a small corridor that goes directly outside, and that's the hallway that leads directly to the van loop that I mentioned, the, the circular turnaround. So, if a student is in distress and in the nurse's office, and they, they may need to get out of there quickly, an ambulance can actually pull into that round circle right up to the back door, the nurse, get a student out very discreetly. There's, there's only half of one of the two-story classroom wings that would even have visual to that, that loop, and an ambulance could very discreetly get in and out with, without too much trouble. So, I, I think a lot of the administrators and, especially the nurse that we talked to, were pretty thrilled about being able to accomplish that.
One of the things that Jim touched upon, I just wanted to clarify or make sure you really understand, is now a parent could come into this area, and, and the student could get called down to there. The, the public won't be walking and wandering around the school as they, they currently do now in order to get to different wings. You have one central area where all the staff that's required to be there are. If the parents need to talk to the child, the child can be escorted down. No longer are the public going to be just wandering around the school. Security, as you know, is one of the top things, and, and we're not looking for any, any trouble by having people wander. And so, by isolating the entrance and where their access can be, we, we've resolved that.
Okay. Another one of the critical areas in the building is the existing auditorium, and we're proposing building five new tech ed spaces now. This would be a robotics lab, a technology classroom, and two materials testing labs. So, it's the traditional shops that are now transforming into more technology-rich spaces. And one, one of the driving factors in the design is to really bring those technology spaces to the heart of the building and open this up and put all of that learning on display. So, I have some 3D images that I'll show you. We're introducing as much glass in that area as we can, so that as the students circulate around the, the perimeter, going from a classroom to a special, they're always going to be exposed to that technology. They're going to be curious as, as to what's going on in the robotics lab. We, we thought it was a really powerful design move, and it really supports some of the learning that, that we heard the teachers' desire to be going on over the next few years in this area. I, I think this is going to be one of the most transformational spaces in, in the school. It's, it's a very dark hallway right now. There's no natural light, and by opening this up and introducing the glass and some, some clear story windows up high in that big blank auditorium wall, I, I think it's going to be a completely different space than, than what it is now. And then, one, the, one of the last spaces in, in a blow-up plan that I want to talk about is how the public spaces really come together. So, I talked a little bit about how we, we moved big program spaces around. Currently, with the auditorium in the center of the building, anybody coming to see a play or, or visit goes right into the heart of the building. They have to walk through half the building to get there. I think there was a very strong desire, when we started talking to folks, to create a new public entry, a public side to the building. Schools are community buildings, you know, and they get used on the, in, on the weekends and at night. So, what we're proposing is to create this new public lobby that would give you access to the brand-new auditorium as well as the existing gymnasium. So, we're creating a lobby with a single entrance that gets you into the auditorium, the gymnasium, and we've also sectioned off the building with some doors at the hub, so that the cafeteria, which is located in the former pool, is actually part of that public zone. So, there's actually a loop hallway that you can see on the plan that gives you access to the cafeteria, gymnasium, and auditorium without having to open up the whole rest of the building. Really a nice security feature, and I think it's, it's going to, it's going to work well. Even, even over the last two weeks, we've had additional conversations about how that functions, how students would come in, how the public would come in. We actually reworked the kitchen quite a bit, because we started talking through a scenario with the food service folks about how we were going to queue students up. We want to keep the kids going to the cafeteria separate from the kids leaving the gymnasium. There's masses of, of students. So, we actually designed a new pathway for the students to come into the cafeteria, where they filed down a single hallway, dropped their books at the table they were going to eat at, and then go into the food service, pick up their hot lunch, and then come back to their table. And in the meantime, there's a separate hallway for the kids that are leaving the cafeteria to leave, so those paths never cross. And we also pushed some of the circulation for the gym classes out of that main corridor as well. So, over the last few weeks, the, the design continues to evolve, and, and I think it's just getting better and better as we move forward here. So, I mentioned some of the 3D modeling that happened over the summer. We've been working very closely with the committee to try to get images in front of them, so that they, they understood how all these pieces were fitting together. So, I just wanted to put this out there in front of you, just to help you understand the 3D nature of this and how the, how the spaces work and the adjacencies are, are beginning to work with each other. So, you can see, this is the new auditorium. There's basically six big blocks of seats, about 100 seats each block, and we, we've really changed the proportion of the auditorium. The, the seat that's farthest away is probably only about halfway up from where the existing auditorium is, from the front of the stage, about halfway back. So, I, I think it was important to try to get a comfortable seating. It's, it's a wider but shorter auditorium. Right now, the, the auditorium just isn't functioning, and, and it needs to be corrected. So, it's, it's going to be nice. I have some 3D images here that I, I can show you. I think it'll give you a good idea of just the level of finishes that we're anticipating, and just how comfortable that, that new auditorium is going to be. You can see we're introducing acoustical panels, lighting, natural daylight at the back, actually. We have some windows that'll be exposed at the back, so that during the day, students can come in. There's actually There's actually been natural light. When there are performances, we actually have blackout shades that'll cover that up, and it'll become more of a black box theater. But, we've been utilizing these images to try to get in front of the building committee to just get feedback, and we've had some really good conversations and thoughts, and it's good because we present this stuff, and we're getting questions from the committee, and then going back and, you know, readjusting things, rethinking. It's been a very interactive process. I've been very, very happy with how everything has gone so far. This is another view just from straight back. So, this would be the farthest seat back in the auditorium, dead center, kind of looking back over the control booth and directly at the stage. The area that I said I thought was going to be most transformational was the center hub, where that existing auditorium is. We're going to be doing significant demo in that area, but I think this starts to give you an idea of, by introducing glass, how transparent and on display that learning can be. This is the science and technology classroom. You can see we're anticipating using movable furniture. You know, all of this stuff can get rearranged and utilized by the students for whatever they're doing. You know, we had a list of activities that some of the teachers gave us, but we know that two years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, they're going to be doing things very, very differently. So, we're trying to create these flexible environments that are agile and very easily rearranged just to accommodate whatever curriculum gets introduced here over the next few years. This is another view of the robotics classroom, and you can see how we're anticipating that learning really spilling out into the corridor. Right now, there's a lot of wasted space in that circular area, and we're anticipating having students be able to work on projects right out in the hallway. We're using some large double doors, some overhead doors, so that there's this connectivity between the classroom and the extended learning that happens in the corridors, and we're hoping that we can really make some connections with students that are just traversing by, looking, and it really kind of piques their curiosity as to what's going on in that room. This is just a view of a typical classroom. You can see how we're, you know, really kind of transforming this. Once again, movable furniture, flexible furniture. We are maintaining some of the clear story windows. That was one thing that we heard from the staff. They really liked how the clear story that sits between the classroom and the corridor just gives you a little bit of shared light. So, we're reintroducing that. You know, it's old fire glazing. It'll be all-new glass, but it's a feature that we wanted to keep. We heard works pretty well. This is just a view of a typical science room, and once again, the flexible furniture, things that can move around. All the utilities would be at the perimeter, so our sinks and power and data are all at the perimeter, but the middle of the room becomes a very agile environment. Talking a little bit about the outside of the building, considering that we're only building about 18,000 square feet of new, and ultimately, the building's got about 190,000 square feet, there's not a tremendous amount of new construction going on. So, we don't think we're going to transform the exterior look of the building all that dramatically. I think you're all very familiar with the building. There's a lot of brick out there, and architecturally, there's just a lot of punched windows. We're trying to pick up on some of the detailing of the existing canopies and kind of rethinking that and modernizing it, putting a modern spin on the canopies at the new main entry and the public entry. But, I think this is a picture that just kind of characterizes what's out there right now. We've gone through exercises with the committee, trying to understand how we're going to exactly match the brick because we're going to be filling in a lot of holes, a lot of louvers, some windows here and there, as well as introducing some modern materials as well to try to make that auditorium piece feel a little bit different. We want it to fit in but feel more modern. So, this is just a rendering of what we think that that new public entry is going to look like. On the right-hand side is actually the volume of the auditorium itself, a little bit bigger, and then the brick box in back is the existing gymnasium. So, in between those two very public, community-based spaces, we wanted to bring the scale down a little bit, and you can see we're introducing a lot of glass into that public lobby, trying to make it warm and open and inviting, introducing some cementitious panel. It's actually going to look like wood, so I think we're bringing the scale of it down to a human scale. You know, gymnasium and an auditorium are kind of big boxes, and they can get a little out of scale and inhumane at times, so we're trying to introduce materials that'll soften the environment a little bit and make it warm and welcoming. And we're working with our landscape architect as well to try to soften that and bring in some natural elements, like some big boulders. So, if the kids are sitting out there waiting for a ride, instead of standing or sitting on a bench, you know, middle school kids love to just hang out and kind of lean up on a big boulder, and that's actually one of the subtle security elements that we're introducing. We don't necessarily want security to be front and center, but as far as a big public lobby, we want to try to keep vehicles as far away from that as we can. So, that's one of the things that we've been talking about with our security team. And then, the last image I have here is just a slightly different angle of that same entry. I think it gives you an idea of the glass that we're introducing into the public lobby, the wood feel to some of the smaller elements, and then the cementitious panel that we're using on the big box of the auditorium. So, the good news is the design team has been moving along. We've been getting really great feedback, and I think the best news of all is that we're actually kind of on budget. We just wrapped up schematic design. We're well into design development. We have another deadline coming up in another month or so. But, you know, the team has been tracking the costs, and I think at this point, we're actually in really good shape, so.
One of the things I just wanted to add, the school will be 100% fully air-conditioned. So, we're not going to have operable windows. The windows are going to be fixed because it's going to be controlled by air conditioning. The fields in the back, one of the things that Jim touched upon was moving the basketball courts down, which we're able to take out the retaining walls, as he mentioned. But, what it also did, it was it lessened the pitch and the slope, so now there's going to be, the entire back field's are going to have sidewalks, fully ADA accessible, handicap accessible, wheelchair. So, it's going to be as steep as it is right now because you're not achieving your ADA quarter inch or half inch per foot grade, and you don't want to have runs and keep going back and forth just to get down to the field. Also, the fields themselves, the basketball courts will be lit. The fields will only have enough light for security. They're not going to be lit fields. We have recreational fields for that purpose, and they will not be sprinklered. So, I just, those were questions that have been brought up to the committee that I just wanted to touch upon. Regarding the security, the town, we are very fortunate that when Sandy Hook took place, J C J was part of the team that came up with the school's security requirements for the state standards. So, this is nothing new to them. They were part of, like I said, they were part of the author of coming up with what's required for schools. One of the things that we do not do, we don't talk about publicly what we're doing security-wise. We don't want to let everybody know that shouldn't know what we're doing. We do talk with all the state, the safety officers in town. We talk with the fire department. We talk with the code officials. We talk with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, the principal. They are all aware of what the security measures that we are implementing in the school are. So, just if we don't talk about it, doesn't mean it's not getting done. It's because we don't want people to know that shouldn't know. Chris, if you want to take over regarding your role?
Sure. Good evening. So, about a year and a half ago, it was the last time you saw me when we presented the revised ed specs, and many of you on the board were involved in that process. That was lengthy. However, it's proven to be a good roadmap and a document for J C J to use to develop all the images that you've seen thus far. They've really taken those ed specs. They've met with all the staff, as I mentioned earlier, and really understand exactly what the program needs are of this building and have articulated that in the images that were presented earlier. We meet on a regular basis, myself, Gilbane, J C J. We also involve the Office of School Construction Grants at the state. They attend our meetings, our design meetings, so they are active in all of the decisions that are going into this building. The benefit of having them as involved as they are is to really maximize the reimbursement that the district is set to receive, the 70.71% that this project is going to receive. So, it's really critical that they are involved at every step along the way to make sure that that is maximized and that there's no surprises later on. As you are all aware, the PCB contamination in the building, the first round that was done about a year and a half ago, that uncovered some of the interior caulking. We did do some additional testing. We tested some of the exterior caulking at the windows. Some areas were better than other areas. Some areas came back a little bit worse than we had expected. However, it's everything that we've carried, so it's within the estimate that we have right now. We had some additional sampling results come back this morning that was presented in our design team meeting for some CMU, and those areas aren't fantastic, but again, they are manageable and they're within our budget. One of the areas of PCB concern that came back considerably better than expected was the soil tests. Originally, we were projecting to be about five feet out and about two feet down with contamination. However, the tests have come back and we're about three feet out from the building and about four to five inches down. So, that's a considerable savings there that we don't have to remove and then replace all that soil. So, again, all in all, it's manageable. Some aspects aren't ideal, but we'll manage it throughout the process. As Jim had mentioned, this last slide, the budget doesn't seem all that interesting, but there's been a considerable amount of work that's gone into this slide. As Jim mentioned, we did reconcile the schematic design. There's three phases in the design process, schematic design, design development, and construction documents. At the end of each one of those phases, both Gilbane and the estimator from J C J do an independent, non-contacted estimate, and this isn't a square foot, high-level estimate. There was probably 40 or 50 pages by each estimator that was produced, actual quantity takeoffs, a true, again, a true understanding of the design and all of the materials and components that go into that. And that was about a two-week effort for each of the estimators, and then we sat in a conference room for about seven hours. And when we first started, the two estimators were about $700,000 apart on a $72 million estimate. So, by the time we got done, we were able to reconcile to the top number there, the $72,500,000, which is exactly within our grant total of $84,373,000. So, it's right where we need it to be right now, and it's looking very favorable that we'll be able to stay there based on the progress of the design documents where they are now and considering the results of the PCB testing that we've now fully have an understanding of. So, things are really, are going in the right direction now. There really shouldn't be too many more surprises going forward. So, with that, Bruce is going to touch on phasing.
I sure will. Bruce Kullag, principal with J C J. First and foremost, want to say thank you to the board and everybody for selecting J C J. As you can see, we are truly excited about this project and enjoy these projects. For those of you remember the old Jeter, Cook, and Jepson, we did the Elkhorn School right up the road, and that was one of my projects, and I remember that. That had been closed for a while. It opened up, and I remember the joy and excitement for this board opening up a neighborhood school right up the road. So, that's what gets us up and going in the morning. So, again, we're truly excited and thank you. Chris has talked about the estimate. One item on the estimate, when you see two estimators look at a number like this and they're that close with the numbers, what it says to us is, the good news is that they are looking at the same scope of work on the documents we produced, and that always feels pretty good. There's more estimates that are coming in the process, so that works really well. The other is, we haven't talked about, except briefly, is schedule. I put together a calendar schedule for the building committee, which populates all the dates of the events that are happening so that there's no surprises. So, for example, next week, we're anticipating submitting to planning and zoning. That's on the schedule. It was a reminder for everybody. That's one of our major milestones, as well as, Chris mentioned, the Office of School Construction Grants, who's with us. They were in our office today to talk about this project, and they're there, and as you know, their importance is, they're the ones that ultimately say, yes, the project can go out to bid, and by the way, Enfield, you're eligible for your reimbursement rate. So, that's critical to us. Since Ammar couldn't make it tonight from Gilbane, so I'm going to put my construction manager hat on tonight and talk construction. It's scaring the heck out of these guys, but we're going to do that anyway. So, you didn't know you'd get entertainment tonight, did you? So, when we were interviewed for the project, we came up with an initial phasing plan that we thought might work on this project. Obviously, you have students in place. They need to be in this building. We can't impact the educational curriculum, so we need to be able to try to find a way to build these renovations while at the same time minimizing any impact to the educational program. So, we had initial thoughts. Gilbane has been working with us, and they've come back with some thoughts. So, from a schedule standpoint, by February of next year, we hope to be ready to get the project out in the street and out to bid, and then by April of next year, construction would start. So, as you look at this document, if you see on the lower left, you see the two blue squares there. One of them is the media center addition that was done, I think '03, '04 is my recollection. And then, the other blue looks like an upside-down L there. That's the existing cafeteria. Reason I bring those up is those two spaces would be the first two spaces that start to get renovated in April, and they are the spaces that are going to serve as the swing space for the students. We're creating classrooms, temporary classrooms for the students there, and those swing spaces will stay as temporary classrooms throughout the project. The other piece then, as we get into it, oh, thank you, Randy. So, there's the cafeteria. You can see we've laid out the furniture for the classroom and the number of potential students you can put in there, but those start to be, again, those become the temporary spaces in the cafeteria, and then I think we have a layout for the media center there. These spaces, as I said, because they're temporary, at the end of the project, they will be reconfigured back into, at least the media library, back into the media library, and the cafeteria gets reconfigured to other new space. The intent is that the red wing, the white wing, and the blue wing, one wing at a time gets moved in. So, the student body ends up moving in one time into their temporary space while their wings are being constructed, and then they move back into their wings. So, the impact to them has been minimized. It's one time move out, one time move back in, and they're in a brand-new space. Concurrently while that's happening, depending on the color of the screen here, but the more maroon or red area is the auditorium construction that will commence. Brand-new construction. We can begin that pretty early in the process, so we'd start the auditorium construction. And then, the orange is the construction, which would be the existing cafeteria as well as the existing tech ed wing. As we start to move through the phases, I think I skipped a phase here.
No, you're in three. You're three.
I'm good?
Yeah.
I'm good. So, as construction continues into 21, you can see now the purple boxes are the, excuse me, the blue wing, the auditorium, and the new music wing are all new construction or renovated construction that's been completed. Blue wing, obviously, students move back in out of their temporary space, and I forget what, the red, the white wing moves into temporary. what, the red, the white wing moves into temporary space. Also, by the way, I should note that because we're renovating the existing cafeteria for temporary classrooms, where are these students going to have lunch? And what we're going to do is, they're going to have lunch in the, what is the current auditorium. So they'll be eating lunch in there, similar to, I think, what Gilbane had done with the high school, which I understand that the program worked really well and it was, it was successful, as best can be for, you know, construction. So they work there. And again, we're still maintaining those temporary classrooms as we go through the construction, and we're into February of '22 when, when these are done. And then from February of '22 to August of '22, we complete the renovations of the white and red wings, students move back in. We start to now renovate the wing that becomes the new admin suite, where we can get admin in. And also, the, the wing that goes into the new media center becomes the world language wing. Those, those two pieces get done last. And again, through all this, and it's, it's difficult to explain it all simplistically because there's a lot of complexity to this, but it all, all these pieces fall in place, and we want to make sure that they dovetail with each other. And then the admin, you know, the admin's last, but that's one of the most important spaces, and they'll be able to be up and operational for August of '22. The, this is just an overall schedule that Gilbane had put together. Go back, go back a slide, Randy. So the other, the other piece here is, and it hasn't been worked out in detail by Gilbane yet, but don't forget, we have the renovations that was mentioned earlier to the ball fields. We're going to have to upgrade the parking, we've got the basketball. All those pieces are going to be sequenced and planned in here so that, again, it minimizes any impact to your students, your curriculum, maximizes, but we also want to maximize the opportunity for the contractor to get in, get it done on schedule, on time, and so that they can get out of, out of this project on a timely basis. I think that the only other, the only other thing I didn't mention at the very end, those wonderful portables that you have, that I know you want to preserve, are gone. So with that, unless there's questions of that, or we'll turn it over to questions, I guess, Randy.
Well, one of the things I just want to touch upon before we go into questions is, one of the things that we had to do at the high school, which we're not doing here, we were, we didn't know where the bids were coming in. It was one of the biggest projects that the town ever had. We were hitting a different type of economy back then. We excluded all our FFNE, which is furniture, finishers, and equipment, and we excluded the IT. This number here of 84 million is all in. It includes the IT, it includes the furniture. Anything that we have in our contingency line is for contingency only. It's for unforeseens, it's for, if we're ahead of schedule and under budget, or areas that we could expand on, that is money we can use for future. It's not money that we, we need in order to finish the building. It's 100% contingency, which is a lot different than we had in the high school. Like I said, we didn't know where it was coming in. So everything, the 84 million that you see right now, that's all in, soft costs, IT, FFNE, sticks and bricks, everything. So with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Mr. LeBlanc.
We have so much to talk about. This is so exciting.
You have two minutes.
I know, I know. I have to, like, prioritize how exciting. Well, first, welcome back, Aunt Randy. I got to work with you on the high school pre-ref, and those, that was a great time, exciting time. So this is even more exciting, because I've always been a supporter of using JFK, renovating that school, just because I've talked to many teachers, and the setting just seemed perfect for the middle school. I attended JFK, so when you're talking about the building and the auditorium, I think, Rich, Rich, you went to JFK as well, right? So we sat in those red, white, and blue seats.
They stumped back then?
Just a couple comments. So I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this, that you met with, you know, all facets of the school. The second thing that a lot of people are going to be asking about is the swing space, which you addressed, and I think that, that is the best scenario that, that you came up with. I know my kids lived through the high school renovation, and the renovations actually, the construction actually bothers the parents sometimes more than it actually bothers the students. The students ate in the cafetorium, is how they referred to it, those few years at the high school. I'm glad to see that you're doing something about the fields, because I know that's been a hot-button topic around here, you know, why, you know, Fermi has the fields type of thing. One of the things that I find a common theme that they found with the high school is, when you approach our schools, you don't necessarily know where the main entrance is. I, I know they had originally said at Enfield High, our main entrance was so small, so they accentuated that, and I see you guys doing that in the right direction, because when you pull into JFK, if you're not from this town, you, you don't know if you should go left or right around the building. So I like the idea that you guys are putting, you'd be putting the main office all in one space and just having like that one central hub where parents would be able to know where to go. The next thing that I think is wonderful is that, how you're separating the public versus the programs, because like you said, JFK is used huge amount by the community, just like Enfield High, and then that preserves the, the teaching space and, and security. I'm sure was a huge topic behind that. AC in all the school. You said, and there's going to be lights at the basketball courts, correct?
That's correct.
I'm talking so fast, because I'm so excited, I know. I know. So the basketball courts, so many, I live in that area, so many kids use those basketball courts all the time, and so that would just be a wonderful addition to them. I understand about the security. I asked about the swing space. One of the things that I found interesting in where you're going to set up the temporary classrooms, you're going to put up partitions, and, you know, in my head, you try to be the devil's advocate, and you wonder, you know, if, if parents are going to have an issue with that. But if you've ever visited a classroom down in the Black Wing, they kind of have partitions anyway. So I think that it's something that can be educationally sound, and there shouldn't be any bump in the academics or the education piece of it at all. Again, I think that the impact to the students and their day is going to be minimized. I like how you're doing it wing by wing, so they're only moving once. I think that you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate the thoughtfulness in it. I was thrilled last year with the pre-ref and the fact that this finally passed. It was a huge relief. And I just am so excited for the teachers and the students and the families here in Enfield, and we have great leadership there right now with you guys, and I have faith in you, and I can't see, can't wait to see what, what's going to come. But I really appreciate everything you guys have done, so thank you.
All those comments and not one question.
Well, I was so excited.
So let me, I'll, I'll address, but there was, there was a question in there that I heard, so.
I actually do have a question.
You read between the lines.
I read between the lines. The, so the swing space for the classrooms, that's one thing. One question that I think people haven't asked that they're probably thinking about as well, we got a construction entities there, and we got a school there, and they don't mix. The contractors will, in the areas they're working in, they're going to be secured off from students. I probably don't have to say that, but I think that's important for parents and everybody to hear. The contractors will not be walking around the building when, with the students. It's, it's going to be a secure space, and that was part of the sequencing of the construction that was, was thought through. That was a, the, the identification of the entries and stuff. We don't have graphics completed yet, obviously, on that. But yeah, you will see the main entry. It will, it will have an image of its own. It will be identifiable, how we treat canopies and, and glazing and doors and everything there, so that you will drive up to the school and say, oh, that's the entry. So.
I guess my one question is, so we have 18,610 square feet of new space, and that wouldn't be, as, that rate of reimbursement would be zero, or would we have?
No, that's, the whole, sorry. The whole project falls under renovated-as-new status?
Oh, okay.
With the state, so everything right now is subject to the same eligibility.
Okay.
That's a change from the original pre-ref, that it was, the auditorium was only half and half.
Okay, yeah.
The state, the state agreed with us.
The state agreed. They did change their position holistically on auditoriums for middle schools. They do now allow them to be reimbursable, so lucky for us with the second referendum.
So it was kind of a good thing the first time didn't pass, because?
We got a better deal. I think too, one of the things that was also hot-button issue was about the pool. I understand why we're not using it, and to me, you know, we do have the Fermi pool, but I have to look at the educational benefit at the end of the day, and, you know, every single student in Enfield goes to JFK. So that's servicing a huge.
And as you just stated, the, one of the reasons too is that the pool was not reimbursable, because it was not part of the education. It is a recreational aspect, that we would have to spend a little over three-plus million, that would be 100% taxpayers' money, to renovate the pool. So it, it wasn't an educational component of the school, so that's why it was really easy to, to remove it.
Yeah, and I appreciate you expanding on that, because a lot of people, I'm sure, have questioned you about it, just in your day-to-day about it. So I appreciate you expanding on that, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Riley.
Great presentation, thank you. I just had two questions, since I'm on facilities. At one point in time, do you, not you guys, but the construction company become responsible for the PCB testing and reporting to EPA versus from when the town has it for now?
Yep. So that's, excuse me, so that's essentially now. We've, we've completed all the testing that we feel we need to do at this time, so we have an overall picture of what the hazardous materials are within the building. And then that abatement will begin once construction starts in June of next year, and then will progress as the phases go along, so that technically the abatement and the responsibility of the EPA reporting now falls under Gilbane, or with Gilbane, and, and their subcontractors, once they're hired, once it, once it goes out to bid in, in January, February of next year. So there is that, there is that additional step as well to select those contractors, but it's essentially under their scope now.
Okay.
Now, the benefit of, of that, and the town has been doing abatement?
Right.
At 100% taxpayers' dollar.
Correct.
By us assuming responsibility of it now, that is all reimbursable to the town. So we're saving millions of dollars, but it's still achieving the same, we're abating the building, and by doing what we, we call, the state calls renovate-as-new, we're pretty much gutting it. So any, any kind of contaminants, anything that we come across gets removed. We don't have to apply for special permits. Anything that has any type of abatement requirement gets, gets abated now and, and being reimbursed. So by us assuming all of this, it's saving millions of dollars of, of dollar-for-dollar for taxpayers.
Perfect. Let's have one other question.
Go ahead.
Then since we have such an awesome hub of the school, with technology and all that, did you guys ever think about or talk about solar or like a mini-solar array for a learning opportunity for?
Well, one of the things we didn't, we have on our drawings is, we have proposed on, one of the, the site plan, where do we get the site, is that the beginning? The, the site plan, we have an area, we have a proposed outdoor classroom area. It's going to be fairly secure. We also have an area we're proposing for the outdoor cafeteria to extend seating to the outside. The solar, we're, we're, we might consider solar, but right now, we're, we're still designing our mechanical system, and some of it's going on the roof. So until we have what is, real estate's left on the roof, we really can't move too far ahead with solar, because we don't know what's going to have, what we're going to have for available space. It will be looked at at some point, but as of right now, we're still trying to determine what type of, what real estate will be left on the roof after the mechanical systems are done designed. The problem that we have is that we have an existing mechanical and electrical panel that is going to be redone, but we have an addition that's going to need mechanical and electrical. So we're going to be building a secondary mechanical room to feed that area. And then as we replace the wings, we'll be taking apart the existing, and then at the very end, we're going to replace the old one. So it's, there's a lot of logistics going invol, involved in this with the phasing. You know, you just can't take a part of a building and expect it to run when the mechanical electrical's on another part of the building. So yes, we will be considering and looking at solar. Geotech, we touched upon at the very beginning. Geothermal, and it's just not feasible. The cost of doing that is still outrageous, and it's, the years for reimbursement, or not reimburse, but refunding is, is out there, like 30-plus years. So it's, it's really not, the equipment will be obsolete by the time you're still paying for it, so. But we are considering green and solar.
Awesome.
I just want to say the screen is up. Where that van loop is, there's no connection between that and the bus loop, right? That's, there, there's, so it's no more, we're doing away with the loop around the building and it, and it's going to be a new loop out. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Mr. Randy.
Thank you guys for coming. Great presentation. Just a couple of questions. I'm sure the whole boiler system's getting redone as part of this project? Awesome.
No more tractor-trailer. It will be for, while we're still building, but.
Right, right, right.
It's not a construction, but at a point, it will disappear.
Those are, oh, good. And part of the project, new lockers are being put in place, or are they utilizing?
Everything's going to be brand-new. Where the lockers are currently will be part of the cafeteria. So the, the new boys and girls locker room was 100% new.
Tennis courts staying going?
Tennis courts are leaving.
Has there been any question or talks about JFK sports during this relocation?
Yeah, we've been working closely with the town. They will be busing the kids to practices and for games on alternative fields.
Awesome. And last question I have, in the rendering of the auditorium, on the ends, there's space between the wall and the seat, which normal people think is a great idea. At the high school, for whatever reason, and I guess it's to code, there's the ramp, and then the seat butts the ramp on both sides, so you only have one exit for about 25 seats on both sides. Is the plan to go forward, having an exit for both sides of the auditorium seats? Do you know what I'm talking about, Randy?
Yep, I know exactly what you're talking about. Yeah, we.
Because the way the high school one is just, just crazy, how you only have one exit out.
Yeah, that was an oversight.
Well, you could, you could kind of see on the slide, to the left of the slide, there is egress on both sides. The high school, it was a different layout?
Right.
And it's all per-code. The areas that have the seats against the ramp, you're allowed so many seats to be what's called a dead-end condition.
Okay.
This area here, we actually utilized the area because, as the architect said, they took every seat and they did lines to determine where the proscenium opening is, where everybody can see. By having the seats all the way against the wall, it just inhibited the, the view of the stage, so it worked out perfect. They were able to really think it through and put a egress, and also bring it closer, so now every seat has optimal view of the stage.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Well done, guys.
Sure.
Now, I've been part of it for a while, but I, I, I'm impressed with all the changes that you have done, and they're all still positive changes. The biggest thing to me has always been security and looking at how we dealt with it. And you open up the front door, and we had people all over the building, you know, people were pretty good, but it was something that you'd pick up right away. You guys have solved that by moving everything over to the, the old cafeteria. I'm happy that the abatement is finally off the town's shoulders and getting paid at 71%, you know, out of this money, which is fabulous, and we'll get rid of anything else that's there as well. I think the other thing has to do with the traffic pattern of the buses, and parents, you know, they just can't come together, and they always did, and it was, it was kind of a nightmare. You took a, did a great job with that and, and separating the two of them out and making the, I think, the best use of the space. And I always remember when we had somebody that was sick and needed to leave in an ambulance or whatever, it was nightmarish to try to get it done. We'd be driving over the grass to get by the nurse's office. You guys have settled it beautifully. Not too long ago, I raised the question of access, too many kids coming down the hall to get to the gymnasium, and I couldn't figure out a way around it, and you guys did, with that extra hallway. I hadn't thought of that one. I, I think you solved it neatly, so congratulations. Never had handicapped access to the fields, ever, except that big ramp that you get, the kids used to skateboard down? kids used to skateboard down. Remember that one?
Great for sledding.
Yeah, you've taken care of that as well. I think the other, I think the number one thing I'm pleased at is you listened to the staff and you started talking to them about the needs of middle school kids, which are different than high school kids. And you talked about the needs of the curriculum and the design of the team setup and stuff like that. And you listened to them and addressed it in the building. So kudos to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ryder.
I have questions. First, I want to say that as a parent of a current JFK middle school student with another one three years younger, and as somebody that was for the referendum, I am very excited that this is now in the works. So I want to thank everybody for that. So if I understand you correctly, August 31st, 2022, the building's done?
You will have full access to the building. We'll be doing punch lists and closeout items, but you will have full access to the building.
Excellent. So if I am a current third grader, or the parent of a current third grader at Enfield Public Schools or younger, I will start my middle school experience in a brand new building with maybe some touch-up paint happening. And then as I leave the middle school three years later, I'll be in a high school that even then will only be six or seven years old. And that is very exciting. So to all the parents that have already gone through JFK, I apologize, but I'm very excited that for anybody with a third grader or younger, that you will have two brand-new or barely-used buildings, newly-loved, I think they call it now, recently, previously owned. So for that, I'm ecstatic. I can confirm that I've seen J C J in the building. I was there last Monday mentoring a student and I bumped into you in the lobby, so. The PowerPoint that we saw tonight that we can't read from up here, will that be public now that you've shown it to Town Council and to Board of Ed?
Yes, it will be. We're going to be putting it on our Facebook page. The building committee has its own. We will also share it on the town link to the JFK Building Committee. We will also be doing a public presentation in the next month or so. We'd like to try to do it at Enfield High. We want to try to get all the parents that are at JFK or come into JFK through the school system notification will be going out. And we'll be doing a public presentation just to get everybody informed on what's happening.
Okay, yeah, once that data set let us know, because we can share that with all the PTOs.
Absolutely. We're going to notify everybody of the schools. It'll go through the school system and it'll go through the PTOs.
I also want to make sure that you have something similar to the high school, doesn't have to be exactly the same, but some sort of PTO closet, like I had said, and some sort of like spirit wear store, maybe in the cafeteria.
Oh, that's already it? Yep, there, there is.
I didn't hear the presentation, Mr. Neville.
In this area here, in this area here, where it says.
I have to switch this one more time.
In this area here, we have a concession and school store area. So not only do you have the public bathrooms here, but you also have the school store in that area. So not only the students, but the public can buy merchandise.
Perfect. Now, I say that, I know people chuckle, but here's where I'm coming from. It's about the student experience as much as it is about the building. It's what these kids, you know, they're in there six and a half, seven hours a day. And it's the student experience, which is why, like, I'm on all the PTOs and why I promote them. It's, that's what you remember. I don't remember all of my classmates' names. I don't remember every one of my teachers. I remember the ones that made an impact on me, but you remember your experience in school. Like, people have said, oh, I didn't, you know, I survived JFK, I didn't go there. Like, that's not what this is going to be going forward. That isn't what JFK was 52 years ago. So to that point, I want to make sure that we continue to keep the lines of communication open to the parents and families of the students that go to the school, as well as to the staff, and that we set our expectations. So if there is a temporary inconvenience of my classrooms moving and then I move back, when is that going to happen? How long will it be? And people understand if we keep the lines of communication open. They understand if it, if it was a month longer than we said, because at least we told them. So that's why I was asking that this presentation go onto the website and that you share it and I, of course, will share it with all the schools. Because I think if we do that, even if temporarily, the experience of going to middle school is adjusted or modified, or the end results are worth it, as long as we set those expectations for the students that are living there, the teachers that work there, and for the families that send their kids there. And then I think the town can stay behind that and everybody can be on board. Even if it moves a week or two, at least we know what's going to expect. Approximately six months, we're going to be here, but then we go back. If you guys can make us that promise, and I know the superintendent's office is going to keep us in the loop, but I just think if we're honest with the families, this will go very well. And thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And the thing I want to touch upon, we concur as the design team, as the building committee, and as parents ourselves, with the experience that we're hoping to provide is by having these outdoor spaces and out-of-the-classroom spaces where you can really enjoy learning, you could have two or three people learning and not be intimidated in a bigger classroom. So we're trying to give experiences, not just, you know, day-to-day learning. We want your day to be enjoyable. You want to go to school. You don't want to just, oh, jeez, I got to go to school. I mean, you're looking for an excuse to skip. We want people to be excited. But having these glass walls in some of these rooms, as the gentlemen were saying, when they, when kids walk by, they're going to look and go, oh, look how cool that is. And then they start talking and they start buddies and we want a full experience, just as you stated. As far as communication, we agree 100%. What we do at the high school, what we did at the high school was we had full communication with Andy, because he was the principal at the time, day-to-day contact with the principal. We always did a two-week look ahead. So we anticipated when classes had tests or programs or things were going on, if we were close to that area, we would jog what's going on. We gave a month ahead, so everybody knows what's going on. The worst thing you said, like you said, the worst thing is not to know. If you can tell me, if you tell me we ran into this situation, it was unforeseen, it's going to take an extra three weeks, I could deal with that. But don't not tell me and then you say, well, we were supposed to be there two weeks ago, what happened? No, total transparency. The committee's all about that, the team is all about that. One of the reasons why we waited to do a public presentation is because we wanted to have all the information and all the facts and all the costs. So now, any question that can be asked, we have an answer for. I didn't want to come here and say, well, we're working on that, we're working on that. I don't know exactly. We know exactly where this is going. We know dollar-wise where we are. We have the backup from the assistant superintendent, the superintendent, the teachers, the principal. We're in contact with them. We're in contact with the state. The state is so happy with what we're doing. So open communication is exactly what we're looking to do.
Excellent. Well, thank you again.
And just to add on that, if yesterday's presentation to the council was more than an hour before the meeting, Amar was here, he touched base on that, that there's constant meetings between six or seven of Amar's crew to the staff. And every day, this, you know, and if they need this classroom quiet for some reason, it will, the schedule will get changed, just like we do with the high school. I mean, we had more, we had, the kids loved it more than the parents loved it, so.
Yeah.
I loved the design. I love it that we didn't have to buy a helicopter to helicopter lawnmowers into courtyards to mow them. So, because that was my biggest grief with the original design, was this big center hub where the hub was. Oh, no, no.
With 10 million under the.
No grass will grow there. Ah, yeah, right. Grass grows wherever it wants. It doesn't, there's not, nothing that will stop it. And there was no way to get a lawnmower in there, so. Thank you again, gentlemen. I know we have the A team. I want to thank the rest of the committee who's here too. It's, it's only beginning. You know, you know the drill, Greg. We were there, but it's, we thank you all for your hard work and how about a round of applause for Amar.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Drazek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have both of our student reps here who waited patiently, so I am going to defer to them.
I'm going to play tennis again and I'm going to say Daniel first.
So we have a Yankee Candle fundraiser coming up for the freshman class. Homecoming weekend went very, very well, so the football game, the homecoming dance, the pep rally, the seniors won, of course. And Spirit Week went well. And I just want to say that the iPads have gone incredibly well, everything, at least that I can see, everyone is loving them, all the teachers are using them. It's, it's well, it's going good.
Madison.
As some of you may know, Monday and Tuesday are out and Wednesday is PSAT day for the schools. This year, the freshmen are able to take the PSAT, which is a really good opportunity because in prior years, they weren't able to. So this is just another year where they're able to prepare for the SAT. And as Dan said, the iPads are going very well in the school, so.
Thank you. Mr. Drazek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Meet the Candidates Night will be held on Monday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the JFK Middle School Cafeteria. Town Council and Board of Education candidates will be available to address any questions from any Enfield resident. And there's a flyer for the event enclosed in your packet. Unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond our control, the 19th Annual Jack-o'-lantern Festival has been canceled. There's a flyer in your packet as well documenting the cancellation. And one other item that's not on the agenda is our two fine student reps aren't making that up. I had my first meeting with the superintendent's advisory group today, and that was the first question I asked, and all the reviews were positive with regards to the iPad rollouts. I want to thank everyone that was involved in that, that's still involved in that. There are some technical issues, but as Ms. Clark outlined for the group, there's technical issues with Power School app at the moment, and there's some Microsoft issues at the moment. So it's everyone else's fault but ours. Our staff did everything perfectly, so, but the kids have been great using them. So that concludes the superintendent's.
Any questions for the superintendent? Number eight audiences, we have none, so I declare audiences closed. Number nine, board member comments. Let's start with Mr. Renier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to Hazville Memorial Huskies, October 18th is Fall Sports Day, along with Whitney. So students can wear their favorite sports attire, their team sports attire, or anything that they like to wear that represents them. October 25th, Picture Day. October 30th is the Halloween Party and Book Fair Night for the families. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Renier. Ms. Riley.
I wanted to say that First Readers had a booth at Fall for Enfield, which went really well. We had a sight word game and offered other options to parents to help the kids learn their sight words, since that's the group of kids that we service with First Readers. A lot of people stopped by and it went well. We do need volunteers for First Readers. Our first ceremony is on November 4th, the day before election. So I need, we need volunteers to help seat the kids up on stage, to keep them safe on the risers. And if anybody knows a good photographer who might want to volunteer their time and take some pictures for us that night, we would, we would love to have that. Henry Barnard PTO is going awesome. The fundraiser this month is a cash calendar and it's a huge hit. The book fair is this week. Thursday is the ice cream social with, you can purchase books that night at 6:30. You guys have been talking about iPads. Some, there was a question that I had through the superintendent, through the, you're the superintendent now.
Yes.
Through the chairman to the superintendent. And you probably don't know the answer, or maybe you do know the answer. But some classes, I guess, have some apps that they want to use for the students, but they can't load them on yet. So is that like something that teacher has to request, like put in a work order for and say, I want these apps to be able to be downloaded or something to make it easier for the kids?
I really should defer to Madison to see if she's paying attention this morning, but I won't. There are, there have been some hiccups with some of the apps that teachers are putting in requests and they're going through their department chairs, because I believe the situation you're referring to was an actual licensing issue with the number of subscriptions for that particular app that I know they're in the process of addressing. So when you, if the district purchases the app or department purchases an app, you only get a certain amount of licenses to use it. They're in the process of working that out now.
Okay. Cool. Yeah, that was all I had to say.
Thank you. Who wants to start this out? Mr. Ryder.
Eli Whitney PTO update, October 18th is Fall Sports Day in conjunction with Hazardville. Also, there's a UConn football game fundraiser. We actually have the game time now. It's noon on October 19th. You can purchase your tickets through enfieldpto.com/elywhitney. I also want to thank the reading department at Enfield Public Schools, as well as the reading team at Eli Whitney. We had a great author visit yesterday with Brandon Mull, author of, I believe, 17 different New York Times bestseller books. He also did a book signing last night at Barnes &amp; Noble, and I saw a lot of pictures of student friends of mine that were there with their parents getting their book signed. I also want to take a moment to thank all of our new and sophomore administrators, specifically Mrs. Wilson at Eli Whitney, Mr. Sills at Prudence Crandall, Mr. Lord at Enfield Street, and Dr. Berrios at JFK, as well as all our administrators at the New Eagle Academy. It's been a very smooth start to the school year overall, and I just wanted to thank our admins for that. I think that we have a great group of folks leading our buildings. And if any parent has any questions or an issue within the building, please start with the building principals. Think of each building as its own city and that's each town's mayor, so please start with your principal. I think you'll find that the answers are there. And I just appreciate the work that they do, so I just want to thank them. Also, I wanted to mention that this is our penultimate meeting of the 2017-2019 Board of Ed. So I specifically wanted to thank Rich Renier for all of his hard work, Archie DePauw, who recently left the Board of Ed, and also to Sarah Hernandez. I wanted to thank the three of them. We'll hopefully see some of them one more time, at least up here. But if that is not in that capacity, that I hope I see you in the school buildings. I know the three of you are parents in our schools, so that's a much more important job than coming here twice a month than all the committees that we serve on. So please don't be strangers. And if you guys need anything, please reach out. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. Neville.
Very, very few comments. I'd echo what Scott said in terms of our members here. I was hoping we'd do it the last meeting and we typically have kind of a ceremony at the end of that. And I hope we still do that, but thanks for all the work. This is, this is that volunteer work that, you know, we all signed up for and it's, it has.
I was waiting for my paycheck.
Pardon me?
I was still waiting for my paycheck.
Yeah, me too. But I think it's worthwhile. I encourage people to come up here and come out. It's important. What we do is important and I think we all understand why we do it, okay? But thank you, Rich, and thank you to the others. And I hope we come back at the end and celebrate that. So other than that, I'd like to thank Lori. You know, she comes up here all the time with all these great things and she puts it all on this patriotic town and all the good people in the town, and she's absolutely right. We have a great town, but it wouldn't happen without people like Lori and there are others in this town, kind of unsung heroes that do all that stuff, and I appreciate it. I'd also send some kudos on, I think some of you were there as well, to the dinner on the green last time. It was a great community experience. You know, I was wondering how they were going to do it. And it was, I thought it was going to be cold, but they had heated the tents, so that was kind of interesting too. It was fun. And to get to see people in the community that way and have a good time, that's part of what makes this community, this community. So keep it up, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Ms. LeBlanc.
Yeah, I want to take a minute and just send my sincere condolences and sympathies to the entire Mazon family, who suffered a loss last week with the accident at Bradley. Coach Mazon and Mrs. Mazon, they're a large presence in Enfield High and in a lot of kids' lives. And I just want them to know that I'm sending them my condolences and I think about them every day. The other thing I wanted to address tonight is I've spent a lot of time lately getting questions and calls about the debate and our role as a Board of Education. So I'm just going to take a moment tonight to give my thoughts regarding the canceling of the debate, as I received many calls, emails, and texts. And I've also heard and read many half-truths. Personally, I believe we should have the debate. Being that we are on the Board of Education, we are in the business of students and teachers. What an amazing opportunity it would have been for the students this year to come up with a new debate format to include different facets running for both the Town Council and the Board of Ed. the Board of Ed. It would give the students an opportunity to see what happens when a party divides and why people don't want to be married to a political party. These students who get involved with the debate could put this experience on job applications, college applications, National Honor Society applications, just to name a few. I feel this opportunity was taken from them. The debate gives students an opportunity to get involved in their community and local government beyond the Enfield High classrooms. The political climate today is such an incredible time for our students to learn so much. I have always felt that politics should not play a part in our education system, and I believe this time, they played a bigger part than they should have with the debate. The debate is not so much about candidates, but it's more about our students, not about the adults. The argument of the debate not being able to be on ETV falls flat on me. As a constituent suggested, we have time to post on media outlets that the community attendance at the debate is encouraged due to the debate not being on ETV. Logistics space and other details could not have been worked out. The decision was made. I personally don't support it. If it was up to me, we would have it. The thing that bothers me the most is that this is all, the debate is about the students, and they give us an opportunity as candidates to come out and share our thoughts, and that's who we represent, and I don't want anyone to forget that. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. So as I always go last, I get what, what Mr. Ryder said about the three members that are leaving us, but we have one more, one more meeting to pat you on the back and send you on your way. So I did attend the Kite Annual Meeting last Wednesday. It was very well-received. We had the commissioner of, Commissioner Bly, especially, no, I can't remember her title.
Early childhood.
Early childhood, yes. Yes, she had a great presentation, and I tried to do a short speech because I got a rousing ovation, and speeches are not allowed anymore, so I kept mine short, but it was a great, great turnout, and Kite does a fantastic job for this town and with the, with the new Head Start, not New Head Start, the Head Start moving in with the early, the Snow Early Learning Center. It's, I'm just, we're just hearing fantastic news there. Parking issues have been resolved, and through the town, thank you for that, and, and all that. And again, I do want to pass on what Ms. LeBlanc said about the Mazone family, our condolences to, to them, and I think that's all I have. I think I had one more thing, but nope, that's all I have. So we continue with number 10, unfinished business. We have none.
Wait, okay, go ahead.
No.
I'm sorry.
Am I...
You're, you're all set.
Okay. I, I do know, I can count on my fingers, so.
I skipped ahead, I'm sorry.
Number 11, new business. A, approval of 2020 regular Board of Education meeting dates. Mr. Drazek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, Connecticut Law requires that Board of Education's provide the town clerk with a listing of dates for Board of Education regular meetings for the upcoming year, and the town clerk has made that request. Typically, there is a copy of the proposed dates in your packets, but there is one conflict at the time that we, obviously, you know conflicts may arise from time to time, but there's one that we know of in advance, and that would be on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Both the council and the board have, are scheduled to have meetings that night, so the board can make a decision to either one of two options. The board can meet in another location on September 8th. That aligns with the board policy 9321. Or the board can schedule meetings on the 3rd and 5th Tuesday in just that September, but you would need the board to waive that policy. So typically, what the board would do in years past is use an alternate, an alternate location. It's certainly within your purview, but if you want to approve the draft that's in your packets this evening, we can forward that on to the town clerk.
So we have two options here. So either September 8th, which is a Tuesday, which the council would be sitting right here, and we would have to meet over at Alcorn, or we move to September 15th, or September 8th and September 22nd of that month, or we move to September 15th and September 29th, which will be the 3rd and 5th Tuesday of the month, and we'll have both meetings here on TV. So Mr. Ryder?
My vote is for option two, so that both meetings are public and accessible for those who can't be able to attend.
So consensus says we're going to go with option B. So do we need a motion to suspend, no, to change the policy for that? How is that?
You would need a motion to suspend the policy for this purpose, and then you would have to vote on that date.
I need a motion to suspend the policy so we can have a 3rd and 5th Tuesday meeting of that month. So moved. Moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion?
No, dates look good. No conflicts for me.
Well, it could be no conflicts for me to honor us, though. We're tying the next board here, so. Yeah, roll call, or...
I would do roll call.
Yeah, roll call on that, please.
Mr. Renier?
Yeah?
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes, to the second option.
Chairman Cusell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So now we need a motion to accept the second option of dates.
Second.
Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Riley. So this will, this is the second, yeah, option number two, which again, gives us the 3rd and 5th Tuesday of September. The rest of the dates are all on 2nd and 4th, other than August being on the 4th and July being on the 2nd, as per our policy. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Renier?
Uh, yeah.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairman Cusell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So I will officially sign this.
Look at everyone, everyone's face in this room. Take the majority of yeses.
So that takes care of my role with that? Due diligence? All right, so we have item 11B, approval of teacher evaluation program changes. Is that moved? I guess the presentation we had was fine, so moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Riley. Any discussion? I think it was pretty self-explanatory. We spelt it all out. Anything you want to add, Mr. Drazek?
Oh, I just had a question for Mr. Renier. If he was free next Saturday night, if he wants to watch the Yankee game at my house, he's more than welcome.
Oh.
Well, my question is...
You can go to the tape from last October.
My question is, does he want to be our proofreader from this point on?
No, I, I obviously, no, I have no, nothing to add.
And I'm going to make up our proofreader from this point on, because he catches mistakes.
Let's go Astros.
Roll call, please. Get us out of this.
Mr. Renier?
Uh, yes, as amended.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairman Cusell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
11C, we will handle after number 16, executive session, correct?
Correct.
So we will move to number 12, board committee reports, curriculum.
Curriculum meeting's tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:00.
And we're, all of you are welcome?
Everybody's welcome.
Okay.
So, Mr. Renier, if you're...
Yeah, come on down. I mean, you've got, yeah, you've got all this free time now. Come on down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just remember that.
It's at Alcorn, in Ms. Middleton's office.
In Middleton's office, okay.
Finance. Ms. Riley?
The next meeting is the 21st of October. I don't know if we're going to have it or not, because I think Ms. LeBlanc is going to be away at work, and I'm not sure about Mr. Rutledge, so for now, yes, but it might get canceled. Not sure. That's all I got.
I'm sorry, Madison. I should have said that you could have left earlier and not sat here through this boring stuff that we do.
Thank you, Madison.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley.